That's one.
Good evening. It is six thirty. I would like to call the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting to order at six thirty P M. Go-to webinar transcripts of this council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download a service such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. And the public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the CEDIS website at W W W dot Diamondbar C A dot gov, or in person in the main auditorium in South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. And if anywhere received, there will be noted for the record. And when we get to public comment period, this meeting, it is being recorded. And by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at nine A M. And alternate Tuesdays at eight P M. And archive for viewing on the city's website at W W W dot Diamondbar C A dot gov. And we will now proceed to the pledge of allegiance and follow by our invocation and roll call. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Tang and then.
Okay, let's go. I pledge my greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice to all.
And please remain standing as for the invocation by Cantor Paul A. Bush of the Temple of Bath, Israel.
Thank you, Mayor Lou, Mayor Pro Tem Tang, members of the council, city staff, fellow citizens. As we in the Jewish community approach the new month of Adar this weekend, we shared greetings on the lunar new year, which also begins this weekend in sync with our lunar connection. We bring greetings from our community. And I am proud to have been given an opportunity to share this prayer for our country and its government. Sovereign of the universe, mercifully receive our prayer for our land and its government. Let your blessing pour out on this land and on all officials of this country who are occupied in good faith with the public needs. Instruct them from your laws, enable them to understand your principles of justice so that peace and tranquility, happiness and freedom might never turn away from our land. Please, wise one, God of the life breath of all flesh, awaken your spirit within all inhabitants of our land and plant among the peoples of different nationalities and faiths who dwell there, love and brotherhood, peace and friendship. Uproot from their hearts all hatred and enmity, all jealousy and vying for supremacy. Fulfill the yearning for all the people of our country to speak proudly in its honor. Fulfill their desire to see it become a light to all the nations. Therefore, may it be your will that our land should be a blessing to all inhabitants of the globe, cause to dwell among all peoples friendship and freedom, and soon fulfill the vision of your prophets. Nation shall not lift up sword against nation, let them learn no longer ways of war. And we say together, amen.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. And City Clerk Santana, can you please call the room?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Here.
Mayor Lou?
Here.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Thank you. And the agenda is hereby approved. And we have a special presentation proclamation today for Black History Month proclamation. We are proclamation for Black History Month, whereas the city of Diamond Bar recognize and value. We're doing something even better. So we'll go down and we'd like to invite the National Council of Negro Women, San Gabriel Valley Section Board members will join us and accept this proclamation. Thank you so much. Welcome, Dr. Hunter Marie. Okay, well, it's it's honored to present this proclamation for Black History Month, whereas the city of Diamond Bar recognize and values the diversity, equity, inclusion within our community. And whereas blacks and African Americans throughout the nation's history have made countless indelible contributions to the field of science, medicine, law, social justice, athletics, the arts, government, and more. And whereas since nineteen seventy-six, every U S president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout the American experience. And whereas the Black History Month two thousand twenty-four theme, African Americans and the art explores the key influence African Americans have had in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. And whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to remember, reflect, honor, and celebrate the importance, important people and events who have paved the way for equality and justice, to advance the civil rights of all Americans, and to battle racism for a more inclusive and just society. And whereas Black History Month calls on our collective needs to recognize and combat racism and to continue to build a community that embraces all ages, races, religions. And whereas Diamond Bar joins the country in honoring the achievements and accomplishments of black Americans who have contributed to the progress of our nation, state, and city. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Diamond Bar does hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-four as Black History Month and affirm its commitment to live up to the ideals of freedom, equity, justice, and access for all. And to receive this proclamation on behalf would be the National Council of Negro Women and the San Gabriel Sector. And this is President Marie. Can you tell us a little bit of yourself and organization?
Thank you, Mayor Lou, Mayor Potem, and as well as the other city member council. We are truly, truly honored to be present at the city council meeting today. And this is our home where on a monthly basis, we have our general body meeting. And it's so refreshing to see. I said to our members, like, as soon as I walked in last Saturday, we saw a beautiful display of African American Heritage Month. And it just shows the city's commitment to be an exclusive environment for all, where you take time out of your day to acknowledge the difference in all of us, as well as we celebrate Black History Month. As an organization, we were incorporated in nineteen ninety, and our mission is to advocate, educate, and support women of African American descent, their families, and the community that we serve. And one of the things that we take great pride of being an exclusive organization, where we look beyond skin colors, and we just know that we're here to serve and to contribute to society for the better and serve those who are needs. And as an organization, we always have a firm belief that we are here to serve. And every day, we want to contribute to making everyone's life better. And again, it's a great honor to be acknowledged. And even with all the nuances that goes on in society, where every day we're reminded that we are different, but it's a beautiful thing where the city council and the city of Diamond Bar takes the opportunity to acknowledge S G V N C N W, the commitment that we make in our communities, and as well to acknowledge the important contributions that African Americans have made in a plethora of areas that matter, that make us a better society. So as mayor and as a leader of our city, I want to commend you that you're not only speaking the tagline of diversity and inclusion, but your actions truly models that you are here to serve the people and you are here to unite us. And on behalf of S G V N C N W, as the president of the San Gabriel Valley Section, it is our honor to be here, and we thank you immensely for supporting and acknowledging our organization. So thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work that you do. Would like colleagues, for say, a few comments. All right. It is a great honor to present you this, and thank you so much for accepting this on behalf.
Not over till season is over.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Really enjoyed.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much for seeing us today.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
It's kind of weird.
Thank you so much.
You are very welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Also, happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Yes, happy New Year.
Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to city city manager reports and recommendations. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
Mayor and council, I am happy to report that the city fared well with the significant rain event that we've had the last three days now. There are no major incidents to report. A few traffic signals needed to be reset, some minor erosion here and there, but otherwise we fared very well. So I'd like to thank our staff and our contractors for being out in the field continually, monitoring the streets, clearing the gutters with vegetation, making sure the storm drains are all functioning. And then I'd like to also thank our community for being vigilant. And, you know, we're not out of the woods quite yet. I think we have one more day of scattered showers, but hopefully the worst is behind us at this point. And hopefully, things can dry out a little bit before the next round of rain comes in. So all good news, we're very fortunate, and we'll knock on wood. Thank you.
Glad to hear. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, then we'll move on to public comments. The public comments, it is a time reserved on each regular meeting agenda, provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matter of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary. But no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first. Then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining on the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I have received speaker cards, three speaker cards. The first speaker card is from Mr. Alan Wilson. Mr. Alan Wilson, the floor is yours. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I just want to say for the record, I appreciate city staff answering emails, and I want the residents to know that you can always call or email your city staff to any questions you have, concern on any subject, they'll answer for you. My subject tonight is a couple of weeks ago, you, the council voted on the trash contract. And it was a long deliberate meeting for the council and so forth. I'm a little troubled with, when I researched the campaign finance reports, and one of the council members, Councilmember Lo, had received a two thousand dollar campaign contribution on November third, two thousand twenty, which was on election day, November third, two thousand twenty, in the amount of two thousand dollars to weight management in the financial reports that I have. I'm trying to figure out if someone on the council or anybody gets any campaign contribution for any subject, are they supposed to recuse themselves, are they supposed to step out? There's nothing in our finance regulations that should forbid any council member to vote on something. And these type of things are very sketchy because we know that the council on these lines, the council had given money to contractors and so forth, the chamber and other groups. But the trash contract was very disturbing to me because I just realized it's a campaign contribution that got, so I don't know, because I'm big on honesty and I'm big on truth and honesty when it comes to campaign finance. And I know that campaign finance always end up being a quid pro quo. And I'm very strong on the fact that this is a problem with anybody wants to get something, they want something to return, even though the contribution was three years ago. But going forward, I think the council needs to look at the campaign finance, and there should be a period where someone should not vote. And I know some of the council members can't even vote on something that is close to their home, if there's a zoning issue. I know a couple of council members recused themselves when it came up with the, the assessment district, you know, the assessment, a couple of council members had to step out and so forth. That was pretty obvious. But the campaign finance thing is a little troubling for me because I wanted to get some answers, but I'm pretty aware of the campaign finance, I know how it works. If someone gave me money, in most cases, I'm going to say no because I'm going to decide something. So I think it's something for the council to look into that. We don't have strong campaign finance in Diamond Bar, we just go with rules by the state. And I'm a thought that anybody who makes a campaign contribution, and I also firmly believe we should take a bit further. I don't think Council, Cummins, or anybody should start raising money right now, knowing that the filing period starts in July and it ends in August. But nevertheless, on the issue of campaign finance, on this issue with the trash contract that came up, and knowing there was a campaign contribution, so I think that's something that the council should look into and campaign finance is to think about what we need to do, to be very transparent. Even though all the council members' financial reports are very transparent when I go to the city clerk's website. So I think that's just something we need to look into down the road. If you're going to stop a contribution, then maybe you should recuse yourself or don't take the contribution if you think the issue is going to come up. You know, it's a very sticky issue. I should think that the community and the council should look into this, even have it discussed, because I'm very big on campaign finance, because I know that it's always a quid pro quo. And thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alan Wilson. And next, I'd like to call up Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Do you know February is also National Library Lovers Month? It is dedicated to people who love their libraries for all they do for them, whether it's giving them professional skill development, joining community-based events, or just providing a quiet, comfortable place to read for a few hours. Library Lovers Month happens in February because love is already in the air for the Valentine's Day. Library Lovers Month, the library, this library, this Library Lovers Month, we hope everyone can dive into a sea of stories. Our collection of books spans various genres, ensuring there's something for every reader, whether you are a fan of fiction, nonfiction, romance, or fantasy, you can find your next favorite read at the library. Also, please join us for exciting events designed for readers of all ages. At the member library, we have baby story time this Friday, February eighth, at ten fifteen, smarty pants story time for toddlers on Tuesdays at ten fifteen. Fiber arts meets up for adults on February eighth and fifteenth. A lunar new year celebration for children ages five to twelve on Saturday, February tenth at two P M. D I Y mini library for teens on Monday, February twelfth at four P M. And a drumming song program to celebrate African American and Black History Month on Thursday, February thirteenth at four P M. In the month of February, we also hope you can share what you love about LA County Library on social media and other Diamond Bar Library, whether it's the cozy reading nooks, the wealth of knowledge, or the sense of community. Please join us to celebrate and spread the library love, and you'll get a chance to win a limited edition water bottle. February is also a great time to show your support for the library by giving back to the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation. Your support enhances the delivery of much needed library services for youth and adults and help us continue to be a heaven for readers and learners. Thank you and happy Library Lovers Month.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And next, we have Ms. Vina Sheth from Kailasa, USA. Floor is yours.
Yes. Yes, my name is Vina Sheth. Thank you, and Mayor St. Louis and other council member. I'm here to share a little bit about my guru who helped me a lot with his teachings to certain things that I went through my life and how he enriched me and made me so blissful always. And that is, oh, Diamond Bar City gave proclamation last year to Supreme Pontiff of Hinduism, Bhagwan Sri Nityananda Paramashivam. And I thank you for that. That was last year, I think, or a little before that. So we have a proclamation. Our base is in Montclair, and we offer a lot of yoga and meditation and life solution, how to solve the life problems and all that, free of charge. And as this, as this, as I'm a resident of Diamond Bar, I also started, I knows my guru since fifteen years. And then when I was up and very uplifted in everything I do in my life, so and the people around me and my family, so I started helping others also in other residents of Diamond Bar, which, as you know, there are a lot of Indians and it's full of Indian families. So I used to conduct at home, teaching them yoga and meditation and all that. So we are here today, I'm with my colleague, Ma Muktiwa. So we like to offer this book, special book, that Supreme Pontiff of Hinduism, Bhagwan Sri Nityananda Paramashivam, has written. And it stands for, "The vision of Kailasa is enlightened, living for all of humanity, which is rooted in the fundamental principle of Advaita or oneness, the idea that all beings can live in peace and harmony, and that all human beings are equal and divine, and can reach their highest potential irrespective of their color, nationality, religion, gender, sexual orientation, caste, creed, or race." That's his main message. And we like to present now, if you let us, it will be a great honor for us to present. I want to thank Steve Die that I, if you remember, I talked to you one time just to say hi. And so is that okay to present the book? We have it here, right here, or we can come some other time, whichever way you tell us. We can.
Oh, okay.
Can we give it to the? Can we come present it?
We wanted the picture also.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's perfectly fine.
Yes. I think.
We just want to thank the city of Diamond Bar. You've been very, very supportive of the citizens of the city. And the amount of benefit that has happened through the yoga, meditation, and empowering class. and empowering classes that we have been able to conduct in the city has immensely benefited the citizens and the support from the city has been immense. So thank you so much and we appreciate all the help in making it a better place for humanity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so there are any other speaker cards that, that, that we have in the audience? Not, City Clerk Santana, are there any public comment email received or any callers on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was one email received from Andres Martinez, submitted for public comment tonight, and it was forwarded to the city council and placed at the entrance to the meeting for the public viewing. If any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program. I will unmute callers on the line one at a time. You will know it is your turn to speak when I announce your name and you hear a recorded message state unmuted. And there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. Are there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public comments. And.
Excuse me, Mayor. With your permission, I'd like to ask our city attorney to briefly outline the campaign finance laws that are in place that are applicable to city council and particularly the ones that are the most recent round of amendments and the effective date of those.
If the mayor is fine, I can, I can answer.
Yes, thank you.
So the city of California does have campaign finance laws, but they became effective January 1st, 2023. And what the law says is that if we have an application before the council or a counter before the council, the contractor or the applicant cannot donate campaign contribution in excess of $250 12 months before or 12 months after the action by the city council on their application or the contract. That law does not apply to any contributions that were donated or given in, before January 1, 2023. Before that, there were no limitations on campaign contributions because they are not considered income individually to you. They're considered basically contributions to a campaign. And as everyone knows, campaign contributions cannot be used for personal use. They can only be used for campaign purposes. But again, the law changed in 2023 and now we have a $250 limit.
Does that apply also to, to reporting of gifts that might be received by anyone?
Gifts are different. There are gifts and not campaign contributions are basically for the benefit of the recipient. And there are regulations on gifts. The state has a limitation of how many and the amount of gifts that public officials can receive from anybody except for, there's a long list of exception. And the current gift limit is 500, I think it's $580. And any gift that you receive over $50 have to be reported in your Form 700 and it's accumulative. So if you receive $10 from the same donor five times, that triggers the reporting requirement for that Form 700, you know, annual filing with the state of California. And once you are in public office, then you absolutely cannot receive any gift in excess of $580 in a 12-month period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, now move on to schedule of future events. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the scheduled events, we have Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday morning, February 10th at Starbucks at the H Mart Center on South Diamond Bar Boulevard. The planning commission will be meeting next Tuesday, February 13th, starting at 6:30 P. M. In the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. City offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th in observance of the President's Day holiday. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 20th, starting at 6:30 P. M. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the sched, uh, on the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of your January 16th meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated January 10th through January 30th, and adoption of Resolution 2024-03 granting consent to the annexation of 47 existing streetlights into the County Lighting Maintenance District. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve, please, Mayor.
A motion from Councilmember Lo.
I'll second.
And the second from Councilmember Chow. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Public hearings, there are no public hearings today. And for council consideration, item 7.1, City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Mayor and Council, our senior planner, May Nakajima, will be making the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Lu and members of the city council. The Diamond Bar City Code currently prohibits marijuana dispensaries both medical and recreational citywide. However, effective January 1st of this year, a new state law called SB 1186, known as the Medicinal Cannabis Patient's Right of Access Act, prohibits local jurisdictions from adopting or enforcing any regulation that directly or indirectly prohibits the retail sale of medicinal cannabis by delivery to patients or caregivers within the city. However, it allows for the adoption and enforcement of reasonable regulations, including where delivery businesses may be located. With this enactment of SB 1186, any non-storefront commercial retailer that provides delivery of medicinal cannabis may apply for a business license in any zoning district at a physical location within the city, unless the city can make a finding that there are sufficient businesses in surrounding areas from which patients or their caregivers can get their medicine. Upon researching surrounding areas, it was found that there are presently more than 12 licensed medicinal marijuana retailers within a 17-mile radius of the city. Therefore, the proposed ordinance would prohibit these establishments citywide based on the finding that there are already such businesses outside of the city that can readily serve clientele that reside here. The city council is being presented with an ordinance that would expand the current prohibition of marijuana businesses, including physical locations of non-storefront commercial retailers that provide delivery. And as required by state law, the ordinance will allow medicinal marijuana to be delivered to qualified patients or caregivers from businesses outside the city, subject to compliance with state law. Therefore, staff recommends that the council approve the ordinance for first reading by title only, waive full reading of ordinance number 012024, and schedule a second reading and adoption at the next council meeting on February 20th. Because permanent ordinances do not become effective until 30 days after a second reading, a parallel 45-day urgency ordinance has been placed on this agenda, which would go into effect immediately to ensure the protection of public health, safety, welfare during the required waiting period for the regular ordinance. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. And you will go to a public comments on, in, on this item. Are there any public comments on this item? City sent, uh, City Clerk Santana, are there any public comments online?
There were no public comment emails received for this item. We do have some guests on the line. So if you would like to give a comment on item 7.1, please click on the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar software program. No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none and hearing none, we will now close public comment. Are there any council colleagues that would like to comment or discussion on this topic? No, no comment and, okay. So if there are no comments, would any colleagues would like to make a motion?
Are we doing 7.1, 7.2 separately or together? Separately?
Separately, yes.
Thank you. Then I'll move to approve for first reading by title only, waive full reading of ordinance, uh, number 12024.
Okay, there's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Chow and a second from Councilmember Tai. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, and, and we'll move on to seven, uh, item 7.2. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Uh, our senior planner, May Nakajima, will also make the staff presentation. And at the end, maybe we can go back and actually we'll read the title for both of those ordinances.
Good evening again. This would be for the Urgency Ordinance Number 022024 and staff recommends adoption of the Urgency Ordinance.
Oh, Sid, are there any public comments on this item from the audience, in-person audience? Seeing none, and City Clerk Santana, are there any public comments online?
There were no emails received for this item. And if anyone on the program would like to leave a comment on item 7.2, please click on the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar software program. No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, we will now close public comment. And would any colleagues like to pull comments or discussion? Okay, a comment from Mayor Protem Tang.
Okay. I'm a medical practitioner. My experience for the medical marijuana use is actually that I believe in, in our community, in our area, there were a very little limited need and use for the medical marijuana. And most of the condition that can be treated by medical marijuana can probably be used, be treated by regular medication. So in my experience of practicing for last 20, 30 years, I don't see any big demand of a medical marijuana, at least in this area. And so most of the use of marijuana in this area, I believe, is probably consumed for the recreational use. I tried to find out any statistic, but I don't find any officially public statistic of the proportion of medical versus recreational marijuana. But I just believe that the majority consumption of the marijuana is recreational. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tang. And would any else like to make a comment? And seeing, uh, council member, okay. So if that and we are talking about the urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Diamond Bar prohibiting and regulating the marijuana cannabis business and cultivation in compliance with state law slash amended by SB 1186, would any colleagues like to set a motion?
I'll make the motion. And the full reading is the urgency ordinance. Is that what we need to put in?
Yes, if it's a pleasure of the mayor, I'd like to read the title for both ordinance 012024 and 022024. Uh, ordinance 012024, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Diamond Bar, amending chapter 8.26 of the Diamond Bar City Code in its entirety to prohibit and regulate marijuana cannabis businesses and cultivation in compliance with state law as last amended by SB 1186. And then the title for ordinance 022024, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Diamond Bar, amending chapter 8.26 of the Diamond Bar City Code in its entirety to prohibit and regulate marijuana cannabis businesses and cultivation in compliance with state law as last amended by SB 1186.
Okay, thank you.
So I would make a motion to approve item number 7.2 as just read by our city manager.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Lo.
And I'll second.
And then second from Councilmember Chow. City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes, pass. Thank you. And now this brings us to, to the council subcommittee report comment. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for another, another well-prepared meeting. Thank you, Mayor, and my council colleagues. There's, it's been quite a couple of weeks, so I, there was not a lot of committee meetings or meetings that attended. But I do want to wish everyone a very happy Chinese Lunar New Year, Year of the Dragon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, staff, I echo Councilmember Chow's gratitude for your work and thanks for just the diligence, particularly in light of the storms that we've been having this past week. And thanks for really watching out for our city and making sure that, that all is well. Because I know that from time to time, we get a lot of inquiries, how's, how's the cities, do we have any problems? And we're really grateful that everything's under control. So thank you so much. I have some photos that I'd like to share with you regarding our most recent project, the 5760 Confluence Project. I know that at the time that, that we're all eagerly waiting for the golf course to open. But before we talk about that, let's talk about some of the work that has been going on. And in this series of photos, really the crux of these photos are centered on retaining walls. And as you know, Diamond Bar is very hilly and if you had to build anything, you have to put in the retaining walls. Well, likewise, this project, a lot of effort and cost is put into building the retaining walls. And you, you don't really appreciate how much work there is when the project is finished. So it's kind of neat to see it as it's being built because it'll be soon be buried enough. And, and it's really important that, that these are secure. This is, I think, photo number two. This is the retaining wall on the, off of Golden, Golden Springs Drive. And so you can see the amount of steel and it's, it's the grading of the steel that work that has to go underneath in order to shore up the wall once the, the ramp gets built. Next, this is an unusual photo and I direct your attention to, kind of looks like the lower, there's kind of like a box in the center of the photo, kind of lower bottom. And that's what is called the Jack and Boar Pit for Golden Springs Drive and it's the sanitary sewer line. So, so that's kind of part of also infrastructure work that you will not see later. But this is part of the work that is preparation for the final project. And in a little bit, we're going to see the other side of, of this hole where it comes out. This one is also another retaining wall and it's for the embankment. And you can see this is just off of the side of the freeway, I mean, of the golf course. So I really direct your attention to where the, the, um, the netting is, because that's, that's where the wall is, is being built. Next, okay, so this relates to the photo that was just two before it, where there was the, the sanitary line. This is the other end of it. And so that was the one end. This is the other end. This one is Diamond Bar Boulevard eastbound and this is the on-ramp. And again, you see the houses on, on, on the right side and, and the, and the wall that is, is going up just next to it. This is another view of that, that same wall and you can just kind of, you can, you can really appreciate it. It's on the lower right-hand side. Next, again, these are other walls and this is the placing of the reinforced steel. It's, it's wall number 270. That doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. But to the engineers that are working, they know exactly where that's at. And again, you see how much work and all the steel and the effort that is going into making sure that the, the walls are going to be able to support the new lanes. This is a broad picture showing the same wall, but on the other side. So what you're looking for is to your left, there's the, the netting and the wall is just to the right between the netting and where the freeway is. between the netting and where the freeway is. And, um, and this one, the, this is the overall picture. You can see this is Grand Avenue where the freeway. And to the upper left, that's the grading for the new off-ramps. But, um, but because we're looking at the retaining walls, the retaining walls are kind of, um, kind of halfway to the left, kind of silvery color. That's the retaining wall that they're working on. And again, it's on the other side. It's just on the other side of the netting, um, of the freeway. So, so work is progressing, uh, really well. Uh, of course, this week with the rains, um, there's gonna be some stoppage. We were expecting the golf course to reopen sometime in March. Uh, but with the rain, it probably will be, safe to say that it probably won't be March. But stay tuned. The best is yet to come. And with that, I will, um, wish everyone happy Chinese Lunar New Year and our Jewish friends that also celebrate the Lunar, Lunar New Year, happy, uh, happy Lunar New Year to you as well. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. And Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilwoman Lo, I'm almost certain I saw a dozen of my golf balls in one of those water. Uh, it was a, it was a privilege tonight to have the Black History Month proclamation read to the folks that were here and all that they do. You, you, you know, we all are involved in different things, whether you, you go back as far as, uh, Little League and soccer and different things like that, or, or if it has to do with, uh, your, your role on the city council. But it's wonderful to hear what they're doing in the area and, uh, um, taking, uh, Black History Month and a proclamation, uh, you know, what was that, fifty years after the first president did that? So it's, uh, we appreciate their, their attendance and, and sharing with us. I would say, you know, I think we're out of the woods, I, uh, relative to the, to the storms. But if not, I hope everybody will be careful. I hope that they're not. The things that you see on the news that, that people think it's okay to go through with, uh, with a vehicle is, is remarkable to me. So I, what I've heard that I think makes sense is if you don't have to go out, don't do it. And I think we have a day or two left before the next storm arrives, and, uh, I hope folks will be careful and stay dry. Thank you. Good night and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. And Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
Thank you. First, I want to, um, express my appreciation of our staff to come up with this, uh, tonight's, uh, city's ordinance, new ordinance, to, pretty much to counter the, um, the state legislature. That the new legislature, it seems to me that, uh, they're not only try to allow the, um, opening of the marijuana store, but they actually try to do everything, they try to do everything, try to promote, try to propagate the, these stores everywhere in every cities. And I'm so glad that our city staff, uh, was, was able to put up our ordinance to counter the state legislation so that, uh, at least we can, um, probably be safe from seeing that, uh, the new stores, marijuana stores opening our cities. I think that's very important. I, um, so I want to thank our city staff, um, preparation of this new ordinance. And then, uh, the next is that, uh, Chinese Lunar New Year is coming. Uh, this Lunar New Year is not only for Chinese, it's also, uh, important for many other Asian cultures. It's coming on this Saturday. So this is probably our, the biggest holidays for the cultures and for many of the Asian cultures. And, uh, usually during this New Year's, and we just celebrate, we, we uni- united with, um, reunited with the family members, we have good food, and, uh, everybody will be happy mood. And, uh, usually in our tradition, everybody will be in new clothes. That's why I'm in this new clothes today. And also with that, I'm going to, to, uh, use this, uh, hand gesture, the palm over the fist gesture to say Gong Xi Fa Cai. This is our greetings and our blessing for the New Year's. That means, uh, wish everybody wealthy, okay? So with that, I will say Gong Xi Fa Cai to everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Tang. Speaking of new clothes, I was, uh, my, when I was younger, my dad used to buy fabric and make my, uh, very, um, what's it called? Fit the clothes. I was very lucky and younger. And growing up, uh, my dad, fortunate enough that my dad made all of our clothes. Yeah. Okay. I'd like to thank staff for. He's an amazing man. So I'm very fortunate. Um, uh, thank you for staff for their presentation, amazing presentation. I have a couple of, uh, comments to, to make. Um, it's, uh, I, we've been getting feedbacks and feedbacks from residents regarding, uh, the construction here. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lo, uh, updating us on the progress and cannot wait to see it's all done. In, in the meantime, that, um, we have residents or concerns about traffic that's been causing, and sometimes they're left in the dark and when the, the street closure is. And we feel that, um, they would like to have asked their questions and, and, um, like to be informed on what, what's happening, in particular with something that's happening with the rain, uh, the, with the two atmospheric rains that we normally do not, uh, experience. Um, we're experiencing some of the homes that are experiencing some of the dirts that are, um, washing over to their yard. Um, I'm wondering if we can set up a town hall, uh, with the agencies that are involved, that have a residence that, um, ask questions and, and waste their concerns.
Are you? What, what are you?
I'm voting on you. What?
What? If it's the consensus of the council, we can certainly work with COG to see if, uh, they'd be able to, uh, have a community meeting at some point in the next couple of weeks, next month or so. But if it's the consensus of the council, we can work with them to try to schedule something, certainly.
I, I think it would be good to have like an, uh, general update, kind of similar to what we have, just to keep our community apprised of the progress they're making. I, I think an update would be good, yeah.
Maybe we can have them come and do a short presentation at council meeting. So people can tune in, it can be recorded, um, can have participation that way.
I feel specifically our, our, um, members of the community would like to ask, be able to ask some questions and share some, uh, concerns. Would that be?
I agree with, yeah, I agree with the, like, town hall meeting so that, uh, there's, the, written, the, um, speaking will not be limited to five minutes, uh, for the, for the city council rule. So they will have more time, more freedom to speak.
Well, it sounds like we'll try to, we'll, we'll talk with, uh, the project management team and see if we can get them to, um, host a, a community workshop somewhere, uh, here in the city, as well as make a presentation, uh, maybe on a regu- fairly, fairly regular basis. Uh, you know, every couple of months on the progress. It might be a good opportunity to, uh, keep the community informed of, of the progress on the project.
Thank you. As, uh, the, the, those are great ideas. Thank you. And the other thing that I'd like to comment on, we have amazing citizens in, in, in our, in a community. Uh, lots of kindness and organizations that, that help our community and help out each other. Um, I'm wondering if we can, um, get into, uh, something, we can do something that we can recognize, as, um, on Zang Heroes or the special, uh, community members and organizations that are in community at the, at the city council meeting. How does that sound, colleagues?
I mean, we do that now. So are you asking us to bring you nominations? Cause, is that what you're asking?
Yes, we can do something like that. We want to do it on a, on a regular basis and make it a point, um, that we recognize. We can get nominations from our, um, our, our colleagues, and we, we can certainly do that. And that, as we serve, um, uh, we have served different segment, different areas of the county, and we know that, I feel that way, yeah.
Yeah, if, if we need to have discussion about that, maybe we can put it on the agenda at the next meeting so that can be full discussion and we can stay compliant with the Brown Act.
Oh.
Yes, that.
I mean, uh, just quickly, I, I don't think anything's stopping any of us to do that now, is there? I think if we want to bring somebody in, we just.
Yeah, I, I just think that would be cool, that, that we do that. And I don't think we'd do enough of it.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
Let, let's do this.
You're gonna make me sweat.
Let's, let's follow our, our city attorney's guidelines, our, our guidance. But I mean, eons ago, we used to have the new business of the month and recognize, uh, it, the next meeting, a business of the month. So I don't know how that went by the wayside, but I think kind of what you're talking about here. I think what, what I like to do is recognize somebody, and I don't know that it needs to be in this environment, but if that's your vision, I think it's a good idea. It, it's recognizing somebody doing something good, something for the community. And, um, not, not just for the sake of the proclamation, but to say, we really appreciate what you did. You know, here's a, here's a, here's a gift card. Here's a, but that's on you, Mayor.
Not so much a gift card, you need to recognize it because we, um, you articulated it really well.
I, I think that's, we should, as our city manager has guided us, I think that we should put that on the discussion and, and kind of flesh out a little bit as opposed to, you know, everybody throw out their two cents at this point. And, uh, and you know, we can also incorporate, um, as, as Councilmember Tai mentioned, you know, proclamations. Talk about how that whole process works so that everybody is on the same page. And what are they doing? What are they doing for Diamond Bar? And how, how is that special to our community? I think it's worth, uh, discussing.
Okay.
So it sounds like we'll bring something back at, uh, it may not be at your next meeting due to the timing, but, uh, certainly within, uh, you know, the next meeting or two, uh, for some additional discussions that will be able to frame it. You know, and allow you to provide any additional input.
Great. Thank you. And, um, then we, uh, my colleagues mentioned and city manager that we've been facing a storm. And thank your staff again, and, and the contractors, and especially our community that look out and, and check up on each other as we weather through these twin atmospheric storms. So, um, this Saturday, it is Lunar, uh, New Year, and, um, for all those celebrating, uh, Happy Lunar New Year. And then I believe it is the Year of the Dragon. And, um, with that, I will say good night. As, we will now adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one P M. Thank you so much and good night.